And the steering committee, as well as some of these strategies and best practices that we are recommending. And they have to do with the high cost of housing, inventory shortage, or older population is growing, attracting and retaining young professionals. The impacts of student housing demand and the changes that we've seen the last several years, housing instability, housing condition, and then housing demand. But next, please. So, number one, the high cost of housing, this is no surprise to you all. You had rapid price increases for new construction and existing homes. It's created a lot of the challenges that you're working to address with the, basically workforce housing initiative through the sales tax. We do also want to recognize that there's a lot of market volatility in the last year throughout the study process and even today as interest rates are changing. And we're not completely sure how that's going to impact the for-sale housing market. It may plateau, it may stay steady in the Midwest. But that's something to be determined. Even if prices come down in Manhattan, there's still going to be a need for, you know, the workforce and moderately affordable housing as well as moderately priced housing, as well as affordable housing on the for-sale side. So, we don't see, you know, at the prices where they are today, even if they come down a little bit, it will help, but won't really solve the challenge. Next, please. And we compared Manhattan to peer cities to see where it stacks up toward the high end of the peers, particularly if we take Bremerton, Washington off, in terms of your median housing price. And again, this just reflects some of the challenges your market is facing. Next. The second key point, again, not a surprise to you, is the inventory shortage, significant slowdown in creation of new single-family supply. This is something we've seen across the country. You know, production did not return to pre-great recession rates during the past decade. We've seen this in almost every market we've worked in lately. So there are challenges in production and providing the housing units that communities need, which has helped exacerbate the price point and appreciation challenges. Next. And, you know, during the study and toward, you know, in the last few months, you know, there's still, there's still a tight market. The inventory days on market amount of supply is around a month. You know, depending on who you talk to, a healthy supply that creates a balanced market for buyers and sellers is at least four months, maybe even six or seven months of supply. So people have options and there aren't bidding wars on homes. So, you know, combined with the lower production, we've seen a very tight market among other factors out there. Next. The third, I should say number three, the older, the adult population is the fastest growth segment in Manhattan, which means there's there's a need to create opportunity for churn in the market, for people to downsize if they want to, for different housing products that support aging in place, whether it's an existing home or new home. Manhattan added seventeen hundred people aged sixty-five and older in the past decade and is projected to add seven hundred more over the next five years. And some of that is attributed to the quality of life, but also, you know, people just normal aging, but it does impact the housing stock. Next. And, you know, thinking about a gap in the market in terms of retaining talent, young professionals who work for the companies, including those who are coming to the market in the recent announcements, but also creating the roots, becoming entrepreneurs, et cetera. You know, it's important to have an environment and the right housing stock for young professionals. Starter homes similar to workforce and all of that has been a challenge and Manhattan is lagging its peers in attracting and retaining young professionals. Next. The fifth key point, our key observation is the impact of student demand on the market. I believe we talked a little bit in March about, you know, the market's really at an inflection point where there's, you know, the decline in enrollment, which hopefully has steadied or is turning around, although we don't have the numbers yet. Really created an opportunity for some of the single-family homes that were chopped up to return to the market as single-family homes. And we've kind of seen that trend a little bit in some of your neighborhoods. And there's a lot of student housing product. So if enrollment does indeed increase and trend upward over time, there should be capacity for student housing and the supply today. But that has had a big impact on some of the higher vacancy and some of the housing stock, the rental housing stock, although we also heard a lot about very strong occupancy at newer product, very strong occupancy and competition for, you know, family-oriented rentals, et cetera. Number six, I mean, next, please. Housing instability, housing costs are a challenge for a fairly large segment of the population, half of renters are cost burdened. This particular statistic does include students. It's hard to extract from this data, but a lot of households are paying over thirty percent of their income toward rent and utilities for housing in Manhattan. Next. Number seven, you know, we heard a lot about housing condition challenges and it was reflected in the survey, which again, we had over fourteen hundred responses. Both owners and renters encountered condition challenges such as housing options that had significant repair needs. Some was just the features people wanted, leaky drafty windows were very common. As was mold and kind of systems challenges being plumbing, electrical or mechanical systems. So it was a theme we heard and was reflected in the survey data. Next. And finally, as we, not quite finally, but as we worked through our analysis and started quantifying demand, we saw that there's a need over the next twenty years across the affordability spectrum, which means from for low-income households to high-income households. And really you can see the highest demand in that the workforce category. About forty percent of existing Manhattan households fall within in this income range, although there's still a need to address more affordable housing and making sure that it continues to be development of the higher-end housing that's easier for the market to provide. Next, please. And then, as we were thinking about, you know, what do all these, what do the income ranges mean? We were put the city to create kind of these household profiles. So focusing more in the workforce range, you know, what does it mean for different household sizes, different perfections, et cetera? So for family household, the Miller household with the firefighter and have a part-time daycare worker for four people in the household, two kids, they actually fall within the sixty percent of AMI range, the lower end of the workforce range. And it goes all the way up to the Price family, a three-person household, you know, being at the high end of the range, earning over seventy thousand dollars a year. So it's really can be a wide range. Again, forty percent of the community falls within this income range. So it's, you know, everybody's neighbors, firefighters, mechanics, city workers, et cetera, all fall within these different household profiles. Next, please. And so, really bringing this all together, we worked really hard with the, again, the community development department, city manager's office and the steering committee to start thinking about a framework for addressing these key challenges. So that you all can proceed with some early ideas and maybe some longer-term goals. And we're kind of focusing on those priority, earlier ideas tonight. So the goals really fall into workforce housing, policy support to help address some of the other challenges outside of workforce housing, empowering the planning department to continue to create really a knowledge base of housing data and best practices and information for the community to move forward with. And then maintenance rehabilitation and renovation. And on the right of this slide is, you know, tying these goals back to the key findings. So how will they address number one through eight? I'm not going to read each of these, but you will find that each number is addressed by one of these goals, if not more than one. The high cost of new housing is addressed by all four, whereas young professional, attracting and retaining young professionals is primarily addressed through goal number one. And so, really the intent is to show that we are trying to address all of these challenges with the strategic framework. Next. And so in the next few slides, we're going to talk about the recommended best practices focusing on these priority or shorter-term actions. So goal number one, this is the longer version, is realize ten percent of economic recovery and relief. Twenty twenty-three sales tax aimed at increasing and preserving inventory of workforce housings. The priority recommended best practices are to establish a revolving loan program to support the new construction, renovation, rehabilitation of workforce attainable housing. And revolving loan programs typically provide a well-below-market interest rate to help developers start a project, get it sold, permanent financing and return over time the funds to the city. There's a limited term that the funds are tied up and they return to the pool to support more workforce housing down the road. And there's some examples of that in the report. And pursue additional sources of funding, like let's leverage the funding we know that the city's going to likely have in the future. So if any grant application for federal funds, state funds, some of those different programs, if the city has a match, it improves your chances of leveraging those dollars further and receiving that grant money. So there are, you know, today, a number of sources statewide that could create more workforce affordable housing and leverage your funds further. So continue to look for those additional sources of funding to stretch the city's dollars further. Next, please. The second goal is about policy support to support housing efforts that provide solutions to a wider variety of housing market challenges faced by other segments of the housing market. So in addition to workforce, there are things to think about, best practices to work on that support other households. This is about providing support to community groups working to establish shared equity models of development. You have a couple of strong models within the city that have, from my understanding, been very sustainable and performed well. They take a lot of work to create a new one, but it's important to support those efforts where it makes sense, whether it's through code or other elements that could support land acquisition or other items can help create those models if there are groups that want to create more of them. And then continue to maximize the use of federal funding programs to address key housing challenges. This is primarily your CDBG programs for home repair and accessibility modification and other things that are really a key component. And sometimes those programs, there could be another grant that helps you do more work. Those are just really help get at some of the condition challenges and aging in place challenges. Continue to maximize use and make sure you receive those entitlement funds that Manhattan is eligible for. Next. The third goal is to invest in planning, including research, development, procedures, programs and policies aimed at reducing barriers to adding, stabilizing and securing quality and attainable housing. So this is, you know, a good example of why this is a recommendation is that we have survey data about housing condition challenges, but, you know, there's not a database to say what the scale of a challenge is. So it's about strengthening the local capacity to understand the scale of challenges, aligning policies, strengthening relationships and communication with the development community. So that kind of, sometimes there are small barriers that are in a code that's left over from the past that if it's changed in a certain area can help get more housing units produced that are sorely needed. Next, please. And the fourth goal, encouraging a maintenance rehabilitation and renovation of the existing stock. It's continuing to encourage maintenance and improvement through housing, through current and new programs and policies. We recommend exploring establishing a neighborhood revitalization program to encourage property improvement. The one that's been in place in Topeka for nearly twenty years has supported a lot of housing unit development and preservation. And continuing to explore best practices for encouraging maintenance and improvement of existing housing. And on that, the last five years, you know, housing has become a more prevalent conversation around the country. So more communities have taken the lead in addressing housing challenges. So there continues to be new models and new resources and practices that communities can consider as they move forward to help their community and their citizens. Next, please. And so kind of our draft near-term implementation recommendations is really divided into tools and resources, policy development and governance and collaboration. These are the best practices that we just talked through for each goal and they're color-coded in the bottom left. And so that's really the framework we're presenting for the priorities for the city moving forward in the next near-term, five years to, you know, create the revolving loan program or other tools for workforce housing and leveraging those funds to get more funds, creating that neighborhood revitalization plan, which important tool for that is exploring, conducting neighborhood condition surveys. So you have a baseline and can monitor the impact that those programs improvements have over time. And this is just, yeah, this is just a summary of those priority recommendations for implementation. And John's going to talk through the next steps. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Andy. And so in conclusion, we wanted to highlight what the next steps would look like in this process. Taking your valuable feedback and incorporating it into this draft and then sending that back to the steering committee for review one last time. It would then proceed to the planning board for consideration of amendment, adopting it into the comprehensive plan. And then would proceed back to you all for a first and second reading. After that adoption, one of the key steps would be the formation of a workforce housing advisory committee that would be led by you all. Community development department would help in the formulation of that. This group will be crucial in reviewing and recommending those strategies that rely on the sales tax that will be starting in twenty twenty-three. And then there will also be recommendations that come directly to you from community development staff as well. And it's important for you to understand that those are two valuable opportunities for you to give your feedback and approval for implementation as we move forward. For example, one of the, in addition to the workforce housing advisory committee, with the recommendation coming directly from community development would be those strategies that we can implement in-house with no additional budget, no use of the sales tax. Andy alluded to one, that's review of the Manhattan Development Code for any barriers to development that are currently there. But it also includes, which is reflective of this timeframe, the opportunity to do administrative procedures that set us up for grant and loan applications as soon as January first, two thousand twenty-three hits. A lot of state agencies have received additional funding over the last legislative session, so there's great opportunity. However, the city would need to do some of its administrative work upfront in order to be best positioned to be awarded those loans and grants. And that's just another example of a city strategy that would, or excuse me, a strategy that would come directly from the community development staff. So at this time, that is all we have and I'll open it for your questions.
I guess my question would probably be for Andy. When you're talking about the revolving loan program, you mentioned, I took it that you were talking in context initially of a of a lower-cost construction loan, or were you thinking more of a lower-cost mortgage for the buyer? What, how would, you talked to, in order to turn it over, it'd have to be pretty much be based on the construction part. Is that what you were saying?
That is correct. We've seen revolving loans typically used for kind of that pre-development, site acquisition and entitlement cost and construction cost kind of as a replacement for mezzanine debt, which tends to have construction debt that tends to have, you know, eighteen, twenty percent interest rates to help make projects more feasible. But yes, that the construction side for the revolving loan.
With the intention of, that should lower the overall cost of the construction by some ten percent, five percent, some amount like that that would be worth doing is kind of the idea.
Correct.
Yep, okay, all right. Is, is that done, I guess? I don't suspect there's really been a shortage of funds for developers to buy up land and spec houses. It's just a matter of if we could get those houses built cheaper with lower carrying costs for the developer, that would be the point of the revolving loan program, is that, okay, all right, that's fine, that's, that would seem like a reasonable thing. The next question I had was on the, what does, under the policy support, you said maximize the, oh, here you go, support the community groups working to establish shared equity models of development. I'm not familiar with that term, shared equity models of development. Explain that to Joe off the street here.
Miriam, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I think there's two models specifically that when we were using the term shared equity in the report, we're referencing. One is a limited equity cooperative and that is kind of the best way of describing the Prairie Glen townhouses and Prairie Glen East Cooperative, which allow people to, you know, effectively buy shares in that community and live there and be involved at some level in management of the community in which they live. So limited equity cooperatives, I had one model, and then a community land and housing trust is another model. No existing precedence in the city of Manhattan, but many others in Kansas and around the country where home buyers buy, you know, essentially buy an affordable or, you know, workforce moderately priced home at a set price in that community, but they actually share ownership of that home and the land it rests on with a nonprofit organization to whom they would ultimately sell that home back at whatever time they would be moving on to a new opportunity. And that's just a way of more permanently creating affordable or workforce attainable homeownership opportunities in the community.
So on something like that, so as the house would increase in value over ten years, I guess my question is, is who makes that, you know, if you buy it for a hundred thousand, sell it for a hundred and forty thousand, is that forty thousand go to the seller or is that part of that go back to the nonprofit that had the land to start with? Yeah, I'm not quite sure exactly how that, how we're more affordable with that.
Right, yeah, so the arrangement is those property value increases, so in that case, the forty thousand dollars in equity created through property appreciation would be split between the homeowner and that nonprofit organization, which could then use that, you know, that portion of that equity created in preserving that home as an affordable option into the future.
Okay. So if they would, so does that mean they turn around and try to sell it for less than a hundred and forty thousand in my example to make it more affordable than what it currently would be at current market prices? Or would that probably sell at the hundred and forty and then the not-for-profit would be able to use that money to buy up more land or more affordable houses to repeat the process? Does that make any sense?
Potentially a little bit of both, a little bit of both, different groups approach this in different ways. But, yeah, the intent would be to ensure that over the long term, these homes are available at a kind of lower than a lower cost than otherwise would be available.
And so that would all have to have some kind of, people would have to qualify for that with some X percent of poverty income and all that things along that line. Okay, all right, that's, thank you. That's it for right now for me.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. I reviewed your packet as much as I could. There was a wealth of information in there from all the work you all did. So I couldn't process all of it at one sitting, but I do like the timeline that you have at the end of it. And I do like how you broke down each of the goals. I think there's a lot there for neighborhood revitalization pieces, federal and state programs that we would probably qualify for, and the six hundred fifty thousand dollars each year for the next ten years that can, figuring out how to use that, whether it's in a land trust, community land trust, or the partnerships with nonprofits, whatever it might be. Of course, first, first thing we need to decide is I figure the committee, the housing advisory board committee. And if our growth in population is with the sixty-five-year-olds and above, who seem to be okay with their, or at least the fifty-years-old and above didn't have a problem with their houses, probably because now they're in a home where they can maintain it at the level they would like for it to be and address issues and such. So there wasn't that much of a problem for them, but the others, young professionals, renters and such, had different takes on the housing industry. So with workforce housing, to make it more affordable, I like all of the options you gave here, but also working with the sixty-five seniors and how to, both of them have different needs and both of them making sure we have enough space for all of them. One of the things you did address here is the lack of land or lack of space we have and maybe how to get rid of some of those or maybe buy out some of those homes, work with those homeowners and see how we can do some of those neighborhood, work with those neighborhoods a little bit more effectively so that we have the houses that we need and try to not have an over-inventory or an oversupply of apartments, I guess, but if students are decreasing and not a lot of young families are going into apartments and such. But I did want to know, there's a, like I said, a lot of information on here that timelines are, you know, I would assume tentative, the way you have it lined out, laid out here for the one to three years and such. I don't know what we currently have right now as far as, I know CDBG grants, we use those for some of the improvements in our homes. Do we have any kind of neighborhood revitalization program or how does that grant process work right now? Do people just submit and say, I need some plumbing redone in my home or in my organization? Is there, how is that organized and how do the neighborhoods know about it? I guess that would be more for Stephanie than anybody else and for the community development.
Yeah, it's not happening. That's kind of my question on the neighborhood revitalization thing is, we don't currently have a program, right? Or is there a small area of downtown? No, we don't. Because, and why have we not done it? Is it because it's a bureaucratic pain in the butt? Is it not worth the effort of going through it? Or we haven't been able to identify a reasonable neighborhood for that kind of a program? There's some barrier, that's why we're not doing it already. I'm curious of what that is.
So I would say with the time that we've had discussions.
So I, I would say with the time, so we've had discussions on it, it does take cooperation from the governmental entities, and the primary responsibility and burden, if you will, or the primary requirements of the, of the system to be successful, lies mainly with the county, county appraisers office, county treasurer to set up the accounts to do the appraisals and the assessments of the, you know, it's like a TIF, you know, when they, they freeze the value, the people make the investment in the home, that gets rebated to them over time, depending on the formula that's, that's drawn up, which can vary by particular areas for different zones, and so, uh, that's, that's really one of the challenges, and it, there's been a reluctance, because it, it is staff-intensive, uh, and so the issue, can we create a model that is similar to that, but is maybe less intensive and doesn't necessarily require the county government to take on that role or responsibility? And maybe you can do both. Um, right now, our only program is with CDPG, which is income-qualified. We've never really had another source of funds, so we haven't created a program that would open it up to a larger group of folks that are, you know, it's been limited to owner-occupied, uh, hasn't been open to rental property, so creating some of those, uh, type of improvement programs is certainly something that, uh, we could look at, and whether or not we can leverage other grant funds to help with that. You know, we're just, one of the new programs the state is launching is the moderate income program. Uh, we don't know a lot about it yet, uh, first round's, uh, opening up actually this month, uh, and they anticipate future rounds about every four months. So as we get more programs like that, we, we would have some funds that maybe leverage some of those components, and it's about, you know, again, teaming up with, uh, developers or, or other, other companies that might want to help access that too, and if everybody puts a little skin in the game, you might be able to get more resources into it.
I think, so that, that's what I wanted to see. There was, like I said, so much meat in this packet, maybe even within that steering committee or the advisory committee, there might need to be some subcommittees that focus on neighborhood revitalization, or what a loan program would look like, or what would that federal and state grant, because there is a lot of money coming in right now from the state, as well as from the federal agencies, and we can, uh, leverage the six hundred fifty thousand dollars for more funds. So because I, there, it seems like there's so much in there, and certainly does not, community development can't do it by itself, but the steering committee would have a lot of volunteers, but I do think we need to bring in the county, um, for the, for that piece of it, because, um, they also use all of the things we have in Manhattan, and if that's the piece that's holding us back on some of it, then they need to be part of that, um, discussion or at the table, as well as Kansas State University. Uh, if their enrollment is going up or down, regardless, if they're going to bring in staff members and they're recruiting for their own university jobs, or Scorpion is recruiting for, and BA, and NBAF is recruiting, we need to make sure they are at the table to see what they need for their family structures as well. Uh, but I do like all the options in here. I'm not familiar with all the language and all the lingo and all of the agencies, but there was so much in there that we can work with. I felt, um, we can really, putting that money aside, is going to really work well for our community. And, um, so I was thinking, where, where, how do people work with CDPG right now for those grants? That was my initial question. Where does that go? What are we doing with it?
Those come in as applications to the community development department.
You're speaking, oh, okay.
To the CDPG grant administrator, um, and so, yes, they are owner-occupied, as Ron referred to. Um, and so there's an advertisement period where it's made known to the community, and then those applications come into the department.
And, and do nonprofits apply? Is it just a private, uh, private sector families, is, businesses, who? Owner-occupied, okay.
Owner-occupied, but there are opportunities through the CDPG funding for nonprofits to apply to, yes.
And, and how much is that right now? What is that pocket of money that's going to renovations and whatever it might be?
For that, I'll have to refer to.
So right now, uh, for our housing rehab program, we have about eighty-five thousand dollars that we can work roughly on about eight homes a year. Um, those can range from a comprehensive type of project, which, uh, I think the maximum of that is twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, and it goes back down to emergency repairs. So if an air conditioner goes out in the middle of the summer, or a furnace goes out in the winter, we can immediately go in and come qualify and then, uh, perform that service. Uh, the other one, we have mobile home repairs. Again, those are all for owner-occupied units at this time, um, and that program, I would say, our CDB allocation has gone down each year. As we perform better, we get less money, so that has been decreasing, um, over the last five, six years.
So between those two programs, it's eighty-five thousand?
For just our, our repair program, yes, the rehabilitation program is eighty-five thousand dollars.
See, that's not a whole lot, especially if it's only helping eight, eight homes. So I think that's where this would be instrumental, and trying to see, you know, the problems that were addressed by renters, as far as, um, mold and mildew or leaky windows. I don't know, you know, how much landlords can do about it, or what the city can do about it, but if, if our intent is to increase the quality of life and work with our landlords, our homeowners, our businesses and developers, I think we can use this money for all of that in addition to the eighty-five thousand. I don't want to lose the eighty-five thousand either. Sometimes you get, you know, like you said, we get, less funding if you're doing great, um, so I don't want that to happen either.
I did want to provide kind of a point of clarification, if I could. You did receive a lot of information, and there's a matrix towards the end of this document that is several pages long, with a, a lot of different programs, a lot of different recommendations. Those are development strategies, kind of guidelines. This is what other communities are doing. This is maybe an approach that you could take. I think what the next step is, and this is really where, where John's going to come in and his knowledge of these programs, will be to come back before you and say, "Here's a program that has funding at the state level. This is something that fits within this plan by addressing these things. We really think this is our, our urgent first step that we need to go after." Anytime before we go after a funding source, anytime before we implement a new policy or a, a new program, we'll bring that back before you to get your thoughts or feedback, or you can tell us, "I don't think that's the direction that we're wanting to go at this time. Can we explore another option?" So what you see here is really just more of a review of different options that are available. At any time, you can say, "This isn't something we're interested in at this time, and we can move on." That's really kind of the next step in this. We wanted to make sure that you had a chance to see what the goals were, that you're like, "Yes, these are the goals for our community," um, and then the recommended best practices are just that. This is what other communities are doing. We could elect to do something different through that implementation process.
Yeah, no, I think, uh, I, yeah, I think you're absolutely right about that, and looking back at the MDC and seeing some of those quote-unquote barriers, which might be, um, stopping some of the, I wouldn't say growth, but some of the development, but also keeping it safe. Uh, so I think that's something we need to continue to look at. But yeah, I think everything here is, is a lot, and I hope we, uh, we do well by the funds that we're going to be getting, and also by the plans and everything that's here. This is, looks really, really good. There is so much there that I feel like would make our community a lot better, uh, once we get started on everything.
Yeah, my, my only comment is, good, good report, but what, what I'm interested in is, is focusing on one or two strategies to make this work, because I think you take all those best practices and you end up with a train wreck, because you're trying to do too much. And really, the, the key to this is that six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for workforce housing, which has got to be focused on that, and the community development, you know, the eighty-five you have there, that's not workforce. That, that's for some other folks to take care of some serious problems, so we want to be sure we keep those separate. And, and I, I think the, the key thing here is this revolving loan program. You've got interest rates going up, think they're around six percent now, if someone's buying a home. Now, if you can take this six hundred fifty thousand, put it in a revolving loan program, and, you know, keep getting it back, you know, we'll have over six million in ten years, when, when that's over, and if it can be used to leverage some federal money, as I read in the report, uh, that's, that's so much the better. But, but I also think, uh, we, we have to target areas of the city, and, and we could do that by saying, "Okay, these are opportunity zones," and we could begin saying, "Okay, to get this revolving loan, it has to be in one of these opportunity zones, and I wouldn't create more than two. Can't, can't be city-wide." And then, that would be the starting point, and then if we want to get the county involved in, you know, tax things and stuff, that could be done a little bit later. But, but, but I think to get the ball rolling, it's, it's got to be narrowly focused and, and understand, you know, we've only got six hundred fifty thousand, and it may be a great opportunity, though, with interest rates going up, which is bad, but, but this could really, uh, really be a thing that, uh, could, could jumpstart what we're doing.
Uh, just to reiterate, establishing geographic boundaries for a lot, is the first step for a lot of these proposed strategies that would come back to you, so yes.
Yeah, and I, and I think we, we wouldn't want to go with a limit of, you know, homeownership. It, it should be open to developers and even renovations. If somebody buys one of the, you know, we've got some rental properties clearly that, uh, need renovated, and that would be an opportunity for somebody to buy one of those, get this low-interest loan, and renovate it, and then we've got maybe some affordable housing. So those are the strategies I'd like to see us spend a lot of time looking at.
I am, sorry, I, I am concerned. I don't want us to also be in the real estate business. So I think as far as, uh, the programs that, it would be good to see what those programs look like in other communities, as far as a revolving loan and all of these things, and who rents it? Is it the city, or is it a bank, or, oh, it is, it's their city, is what I hear, so you're nodding your head for, and see what that looks like. One of the other options you had were, were for home loan, some, some families have where they can help their, uh, their daughter or son, uh, put a down payment down, whereas in some communities, um, this program also helps with maybe a little bit of that, and then the, uh, owner who wants to purchase that home puts in the rest of it. So there is a, a point for them to also increase their down payment, so that they can have affordable housing and workforce housing, um, as they move into our community. So that, I guess that's what I read, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and when we come back before you, will you provide all that detailed information?
Okay, I'll go ahead and.
Go ahead, John.
Wait, um, first I want to thank the staff, steering committee and task force. I thought it was late before the presentation. The other thing is, I attended a couple of these meetings. I did one online and one at the chamber offices, and I've been involved in these task forces before, and unfortunately, a lot of them are very much steered by staff and the consultant for a predetermined outcome, and I did not find that in the meetings that I attended for this. I found they were very good meetings, very open, a lot of back and forth that, um, went, and I think that's why we have such a good report. I mean, I was really pleased with the meetings that I went to. I noticed in your slides that when you did your projections of the different demographics, uh, where housing was going to go, for college and early workforce, there was no projection, which I assume is because you didn't have any data to show any growth. That was one, the, the projection for twenty-two through twenty-seven. And, you know, I've done a lot of research on this, you know, the, um, college, the number of kids going to colleges, and unless K-State is an outlier, uh, we're going to see that decline in enrollment go through the rest of this decade. I mean, I hope their programs are successful. I hope they're able to beat the odds, but if you just look at the demographics, we're looking for more decline in enrollment throughout, you know, until we get to like two, uh, twenty-third. And I think that is going to mean the kids, as your analysis showed, are going more for the higher-end apartments, the new stuff that's being built in town. They've got the family money and loans to pay for those, and they're going that direction, I think, which is going to take, you know, occupancy away from a lot of the neighborhoods where a lot of those homes were converted into rentals, which again, I think feeds right into that neighborhood revitalization program that we want to get going. As far as your, your programs, revolving loan program, I think that's good, but we're going to need to supplement that with some state and federal and some other money, because that six hundred fifty thousand isn't a lot. The policy support, you know, if there's other things we can do, I would definitely want to do those. And then your planning and research, I mean, ties right into that neighborhood revitalization. We need to really research and identify those areas where, um, you know, we can have some success stories. As Wen mentioned, identify some geographic locations where we can come in with revolving loan program, um, maybe with some other state and federal money, maybe even use a little bit of the ARPA money, and really try to, you know, get those neighborhoods really, um, re-going. Find out where we've got some distressed rentals that, you know, we could sue some redevelopment on, and in, really do a lot in those, um, neighborhoods. I mean, even with sidewalks and other things that are in there, deteriorating, um, plumbing and those type of things, that, you know, typically, the homeowner has to pay for. We have programs where we could do things with the sidewalks, to do things with the connections from the, um, city pipe to the, to the housing pipe. Work on some tax abatement programs, so if someone invests in those properties and they take the value from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty, we keep the base property tax, but we do an abatement for so many years for the appreciation on that property. And again, it gets a little more complicated if you're working with a developer, but those things, you know, can be done. So I think this is a great basis to get things going. There's some really good programs. I think your top four all work good together, and I think it was a really good process.
I, uh, are you through, John?
Yes.
Okay, I, I do have some.
Like, maybe just one thing to throw in, is from the committee, what did you guys get from those demographics? As I said, my research shows, unless K-State's an outlier, you're going to see that decline in enrollment through the next eight years. And you didn't have a projection on workforce, it was just blank. So I guess that's my couple of questions coming out of all I said.
John, could you go back to one more?
You almost had the slide there. The slide where you do your projections for the twenty-two through twenty-seven of the demographics?
One more.
There you go. You don't have a green line on the college age or the early workforce.
Yeah, the, this is a projection from Esri, the data provider we use, um, and that's because there's no growth projected, um, for those categories. And I would say, the national research and projections for college, um, enrollment is what you say gradual decrease because of the size of the, um, generations, um, we're going, you know, Generation Z and, and that going into college. Um, I would say there are some universities that are continuing, continue to gain, that are outliers. I think that K-State is an outlier in the, frankly, the pace of decline in enrollment the last seven years. So I, I, I think there's room for K-State to bounce back a little bit, but there is a long-term trajectory in our state, more so than the nation, but, and the nation of declining enrollment. In Kansas, it's been pretty pronounced.
So, yeah, I think that's one of the things we just, is a reality we're facing at this point.
Linda Morse now. I, I wanted to ask about short-term, uh, housing or short-term rentals, and, uh, I didn't see a reference to them at all, perhaps just because you considered them rentals, but you don't know who they are, because they're out in neighborhoods and we have no valid, uh, tracking method. But we supposedly have hundreds of them, so I'm curious.
So short-term rentals weren't investigated as part of this. That's really serves more of kind of a hotel, or a substitution for a hotel, is how we refer to those. I think it has to be less than thirty days that you stay there, is how we define it within the MDC. So that's really where we don't view that as a form of housing. Um, it would be if we looked at who's staying in hotels for up to thirty days. So that, I guess that's not really a housing option, or hopefully it doesn't have to be a housing option for individuals.
Is that something, Mr. Consultant, is that something that you factor in in other communities?
Um, it did, in, in some communities, they've elevated as a major concern, um, and I would say that in our conversations with stakeholders and the steering committee and through the survey, it really didn't, they didn't come up as a major kind of concern to investigate more. Um, and I agree with Stephanie's point as well. The, the primary impact we're seeing, single-family rentals or Airbnbs have on communities is that they're picking out some of the first-time homebuyer, um, product. is that they're picking out some of the first-time homebuyer, um, product. So, part of the tension tightness you see in the market in Manhattan is because those are turned into Airbnbs and other apps, products, and are not being turned, you know, turned into kind of a, either a rental home or a, you know, it's, a lot of them are existing homes, and that's been a first-time homebuyer market or kind of that workforce housing market historically, and, and so that's created, one of the elements that has created the tight market we see today.
Okay. Um, I, I was wondering if you had any recommendations on improving our codes for the city as a result of taking this deep look at our housing situation?
Trying to remember if there were specific, um, code recommendations. I think we were, um, some of your recent work has correct, corrected a lot of things we've seen in other markets where we've made some specific recommendations. I know Stephanie, Community Development have identified a few items to keep an eye on and work on. But, but we didn't really get into specific code recommendations here.
However, we are in the lucky position that the MDC just started January first. So, as staff has implemented that, we've been able to track what's working and what's not kind of in real time. So, we have started a list identifying certain sections that we're going to review. So, I wouldn't say that specifically came from the consultants, but just the, the process of the MDC going live January first while we're doing the study at the same time.
Okay. I, I wanted to ask also about, um, there's considerable mention here of K-State and students, but there's only, I found only one reference in the very first page or two of the, more of an introduction about Fort Riley. And I, they do have a major influence on our community. And, um, uh, so it, it seems to me that that's a major segment of our population that is, um, just being integrated into the general descrip, general discussion. But I think theirs is also, um, the, the, the soldiers and their families come and go pretty frequently these days. It's not where they don't come for three years and buy a house and stay here anymore. They're constantly churning also. And so, I, I just, uh, was thinking I ought to see something about the word soldier or Fort Riley or person, military personnel or some reference to it. Um.
Well, we did benefit from presence of Fort Riley representatives on the steering committee who were able to share what information they are available to share with us. And, and that's part of this ongoing dialogue too, is keeping that relationship strong so that we're, we're always mindful of that population.
I, I noticed, uh, the, the several people who served, and I, and they're very good, um, um, and forward-thinking people. But I just, I'm looking at this report is also, um, I wondered how do you intend, um, to develop recommendations for the, uh, older, um, population for housing? Do you expect to have, uh, a special committee? Or there, it, it, I saw that the seniors are the fastest-growing age cohort in Manhattan was a quote from the report. So, I'm wondering how do, how do we, um, or is that something the committee's going to do? Is that something community development's going to do? Or?
That'll, that'll be a set of strategies that community development establishes. Um, it'll start with reaching out to the existing relationships we have and the new ones that form throughout the study and relying on what information they have and what programs they have so that we make sure we're not duplicating any efforts, but also identify any gaps that, uh, any potential strategy could fill. So, I think that's where it starts is, is going back to those relationships and figuring out what's currently being done and what we can do. I'd also say we look to this, again, we look to the HMA as a kind of a platform to jump off of, and it's given us the opportunity to look at best practices in other communities. So, I think that would be the second step is what's, what's working in other communities is specific to that demographic.
I noticed Pittsburgh. I mean, there was three cities in the state that you have cited as, um, having, uh, gone through this process specifically before. Let's see. And you, you didn't make any real recommendations with regard to the community steering committee, whether we have an, I, I, an, uh, there is a recommendation, I think, for an advisory board or steering committee. But I'm wondering if there's, there are any recommendations with regard to who should be on it? Should we retain the, uh, should we ask the members who served if they want to be on it? Do we, if that's fifteen people and five don't want to continue to serve, do we go to the community and ask for, uh, people to come forward and sign up? How do we go forward with regard? We, because I think the commission is interested in an advisory board for housing.
Yes, so we will return as one of the first early steps is that workforce housing advisory committee for you all to see. And we will be following the recent recommendations, most notably you, you all reviewed the downtown plan, um, steering committee process. And so, it'll mimic that a lot too. So, yes, we will return with both a formation and a process recommendation for you all to consider.
So, you would quantify a housing steering committee or a housing advisory board to be only focused on workforce housing because of this project and not a general housing, uh, committee for, uh, for the city generally?
At this time, the, the recommendation, the most immediate recommendation would be workforce housing focus because of the sales tax starting in, in January first, twenty-twenty-three.
And, um, I was curi, I was appreciated the discussion about the neighborhood revitalization program because we have tried, uh, neighborhood, having different staff members take responsibility for certain neighborhoods. And we, we've tried some of these things before, and it typically just falls apart and disintegrates. And suddenly, there's no, um, we have no program anymore, and we lost it. But I understand that there are staff costs, and then there are, you have to have interested people also. And so, it's going to be, uh, important to bring that forward. I was really glad to hear about the state initiating or launching the moderate income, uh, program with funding. I would like to make sure that when we do this, uh, at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, I, I want to make sure we put a stop in it somewhere. I don't want it to be like the City University Fund where we just spend it for the next twenty years or ten years. I want us to have, uh, that it's not that much money, and I want to be sure that we're able to continue to have some, uh, control over that rather than just, uh, spending it upfront. I do want to ask another question. I, um, uh, uh, in, in the definitions in the back, um, open it back up again here. Hold on. There, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Housing Choice Voucher Program is listed in the definitions twice. One on page eighty-one and again on page eighty-three, and they're different slightly, not majorly. But I, I'm curious about, um, uh, I, I want to point out actually that the Manhattan Housing Authority is, uh, uh, issues housing choice vouchers, and then they have the public housing program here. But there's also the, uh, the, uh, North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, and they currently have, and they're another housing authority here, and they have currently a hundred and fifty, uh, house, uh, section eight or housing choice vouchers that have, uh, tenants. And so, I'd like to see a reference in this report acknowledging the area agency. And I also think that there's a place for this area agency as you begin looking at senior citizens and their housing needs. I don't know that, um, I, I just having someone on your committee doing something to, because you do have expertise here that not every community has. And, uh, there are several references to the, um, Manhattan Housing Authority that needs to just be, uh, added. This area agency needs to be added to. Anyway, I, I do appreciate this, um, this report. I think it gives us, uh, gave us a lot to absorb. And I don't think we've thought this big before, this globally about housing. And so, uh, this has been, uh, kind of an intense report to try, you know, just as Yusha said, to try to absorb and, um, uh, think because affordability of, for workforce is, is the focus. I'm not that interested in using our six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for high-end housing or high-income housing. Uh, I'd like to just state that. So, uh, uh, we, we started this with the idea of workforce housing. And that's, uh, be, because the employers in the community continue, have been saying for several years through COVID that, and before, that there's, and, and every little community there is in the state practically is, is saying that they don't have housing. Even if they had, had jobs, they have no place for them to live. And in Alma, I heard, uh, one of the city councilmen has, uh, councilwoman has been saying for several months that they have hired a new city marshal, but there's no housing in Alma, and, uh, so he hasn't moved there yet. But that's gone on for six or eight months. It's the strangest, you know, just you don't think about the small towns not having a place for, uh, an employee to, to, to live with their family. So, um, I'm eager to see the next iteration of this. And I appreciate the consultant listening to our input, and, uh, it's important that we do this. So, thank you.
I was going to say, just to, uh, address Mayor Morris's question about the work, uh, workforce housing advisory committee. So, one of the things it says about it is, um, it'll be composed of Manhattan residents who are professional experts in housing and nonprofit representatives, developers, property managers, realtors, as well as community members who can offer the perspective of their lived experience as homeowners and renters, and probably more than that. And I also want to be clear when we talk about workforce housing, that there isn't an age specific to it because, uh, or an ability specific to it because there's also a lot of individuals that, uh, and individuals with disabilities that also need a certain type of workforce housing. So, I think that's how we need to think about all of this as you brainstorm how all of this is going to, um, come into Manhattan. So, not just downtown or not just in the Aggieville area, but in, in the entire boundary of Manhattan and, and the greater community of Manhattan also, um, because we are kind of landlocked. And you mentioned that also in your thing, and see how we can work with all the, uh, assets we have and the challenges we have. But we are, the community has dedicated funds because this is a priority in our community. So, that's good.
One other question. When they, when you started out the presentation, they talked about the tight housing market. Does that mean, uh, tight housing market for buyers? Or is there a shortage of, of rental property, rental availability also? What, uh, what exactly is part of it is the market is tight?
Um, there's a shortage for buyers kind of across the board in terms of, you know, entry level to high-end, um, although high-end's a different animal. I would say what we heard and saw on the rental side is there's a shortage of, of non-student, um, quality attainable rental housing, um, be it for a small family, be it for a military family, particularly on like single-family rentals and the bigger properties that aren't student-oriented. So, that, that's a little bit of both.
We, we've kind of overbuilt for students and underbuilt for the average young family, working stiff people, I suppose. So, okay. So, that, yeah, I'm glad somebody touched on the idea of the, um, the short-term rentals because I, I'm surprised that even places like apartments across from Seco Park, there's a few of those, like the second floor of a couple of those apartment buildings are Verbo, BRB-type stuff. It's like, there, people are, they're renting out apartments, and I suppose you can, you must be able to make more money renting on a nightly basis than maybe you can if you rent for a month at some of those places. But, yeah, I just don't know if, if that's where a lot of the, the shortage may be coming from. Because even like across from the baseball field, that, that one house on the corner is now a Airbnb stadium, something Airbnb. And, um, because that was a, my daughter used to live there when it was a rental house. Stephanie, you want to chime in? You?
Well, John and I were having a side conversation. For the short-term rentals, it is something that requires a conditional use permit. So, we've had a couple of those come in. It goes before the Board of Zoning Appeals. We're going to start tracking that just to get a better sense of how many, um, of those requests that we're receiving. And that's something that we can provide an update back to you all on. So, we can kind of see if it is something that's ramping up or if it's kind of consistent. You're supposed to have one. That doesn't mean that everyone knows that requirement. Um, but it's, I think it's worth us paying a little bit of attention to, to see what is happening in our community.
I guess my, my question and concern is, is, is what, what amount of those units are being underutilized? For lack of a better term, is, if they're a, if they're short-term rental or they're being used one week a month, whereas if somebody was, yeah, now, whereas if they weren't, then they could be full, uh, for the whole time. My concern is, is that there's an, an underutilization, a half-emptiness of our housing stock because of that. And I don't know what we can do about it because it's in the free market, people can still do what they want with their properties to some degree. But I just wonder if that's, um, how much of a problem that might be. And like I say, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. Um, one other question on all this, this high, high rate, uh, growth of, uh, older people moving to the area. I, I know that they, they, yeah, or, yeah, is that, are we expecting, um, a lot of that as new people or just, uh, people like me who are sixty-two about to become seniors? Um, and now I'm going to get kicked into that category. Are we expecting a, because I know there's been an influx, obviously, of, of, of people selling their farms and their businesses outside of Manhattan, moving here to go to K-State and to enjoy our community. Any ideas on what part of that is going to be new people, what percentage versus just the rest of us aging into that category?
Well, I do think it is a combination of both, but I don't have, uh, specific percentages right now.
And the other question is, is it seems like most of those people that have done that, what I referred to, were people that had enough money to come in and probably buy a house in Colbert Hills or buy one of the nicer neighborhoods. So, I, I don't know if, uh, I suppose most of that, I don't know what percent of that demand for senior housing is going to be, could be satisfied by new houses out in Colbert Hills versus, uh, somebody that's been living in Riley and wants to live closer to their kids in town, but can only afford a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house which they can't find. I don't know what part of, uh, that senior, that big growth of senior, how much of it's going to be, uh, uh, lower-income seniors versus, um, they can buy a house wherever they need to kind of seniors. And I don't know if we can get any, at some point, I just, I'd be curious about if there's any way we can sort of figure any of that out and if it makes any difference anyway. Uh, and the last thing is, is, oh, two things. I, I've always thought that part of this thing should focus on converting underutilized rental houses that have been chopped up into three apartments back to a single-family house. And I just don't know the economics of that. If, if it's a, if it's a three-bedroom that they're renting out for six hundred and fifty each bedroom for six hundred and fifty bucks a month, it's at nineteen hundred and fifty dollars a month rent generation. That makes the house worth X amount of money, a hundred and eighty thousand as a rental house. But as a single-family home, it would really only be worth a hundred and fifty thousand. So, how do we get the person who owns it to sell a hundred and ninety thousand dollar house? It's worth a hundred and nine thousand as a rental house to make it affordable? I don't, I don't, I don't know how we can make those econ, economics work because that's one of the things I'd sure like to take some of this student-chopped-up house rentals and make them single-family available. But I don't know how, um, how we can sort of do that economically because it's, there's no reason to sell that thing for, for the forty thousand dollar difference in that value.
Yeah, so we're.
Yeah, so we're, with that issue, we, we face not only the economics of it, but the economics of rehabilitation, being more expensive than new construction right now. And the third layer is this bottom number here of overall number of units we need to, to produce, if you will. We have to be careful, we're not taking units offline through these, what we would call non-conforming units. So, it, it's a really tricky balance, so.
And then the last thing, that I love the county commissioners, but it's just as much their responsibility as ours to make this, the county an affordable place to live. And, and I, it's just a matter of, if it's in the city, they don't think they need to be involved at all, whereas, yeah, 75% of the people live in the, in the city of Manhattan. And it's just as much their responsibility to help, help solve these problems as it is ours. And so, we'll really need to talk to them and start twisting their arms a little bit. Because this is, this neighborhood revitalization thing, I, I really think we gotta make that happen somehow.
I was just gonna point out that on page 21, the report says the aging population is those over 55. So, it's just, you know, it depends on what report you read. Read what age they use, because it, it changes.
We're all seniors.
Yusha, you were gonna say?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember, I don't know, maybe a year ago or something, when we were looking at Verbos and Airbnbs here. Manhattan had the highest, one of the highest communities. I think 300 is what either Katie or somebody mentioned, we had 300. But I don't know what those look like. And they do make more of a profit. Because if you look at any Verbo, they can charge 100 a night. And some people come and have their parties here. Also, you know, K-State is building more townhomes for alumni, and those are going to be pretty expensive. And, and I think even when we were recruiting, I know Chamber was working on a lot of alumni coming back and residing in Manhattan. So, I think those are some things that may have tipped the balance a little bit as far as cost, as far as the seniors, the 50 and older. But also the Verbos as being off the market. Otherwise, they probably would be on the market for 190 or 200, $200,000. But now they're more lucrative as an Airbnb or as a Verbo. One of the other points made in the study was, in some of those neighborhoods or developments to give, instead of making it into a benefit district, maybe the city absorbs some of that within the, the funds, or somehow make it such that the cost isn't put on the owner who buys it in some of those areas, depending on where that area is. So, those are, I thought, really good options. But I'm, yeah, I really would like to know how many of those are homes and keeping track of those conditional uses. And I think, Stephanie, you're probably right. A lot of people may not even know they have to go and do this. Some people just say, oh, that looks like a cool idea, let's do it. And especially if it's a student that's renting out their apartments, because it's necessarily the landlords that, you know, use them for Airbnbs, or whatever it might be. So, I think there's a lot of options, but there's also a lot of different things that we can't track well, which would actually influence our decision-making process about a, a housing availability in our community. Because the technology piece of it is changing so rapidly about making them into vacation homes, or whatever it might be for them to stay here. But, yeah, I, I think, like I said, some of those ideas are really good. But there is a reason, I enjoy living in Manhattan at my age. I enjoyed raising my children here, I enjoy living here. But I don't, I think for us to have more youngsters live here, one, K-State population needs to increase, and two, giving them jobs to stay here. So, I don't know what the age demographic of a, an employee at Scorpion would look like. I don't know. I don't know what it would look like for an Ann Baff professor who is gonna work there, if they're our age, or what that looks like. But workforce housing is, crosses all dimensions, so it'd be good to look at all of that.
Okay, commissioners, are there any other comments or questions? All right, we voted at the beginning to have public comment. Does anyone? What? Does anyone from the public wish to make comments? If you do, I have a little bit to read here. Here comes somebody. Let me read it. Members of the public and the audience may stand and be recognized to come forward. Please be sure to sign in on the list located at the podium. Please state your name and residential address and/or organization if you're representing for the record, if you're representing for the record. And for those listening or watching this evening, each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither of the commissioners nor the city staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank the committee for their work on the, this great report. I think it's, like, it's already been said, it's very thorough, there's lots of great ideas. My name is Julie Gobert-Walter. I'm Executive Director, North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. And I just wanted to make a comment. I do appreciate the focus. Obviously, there is a challenge with all of us, who are hope to celebrate a lot more happy birthdays here in Manhattan. Housing is a big issue for people of all ages. And certainly with the growing aging population, it will continue to be part of the challenges that this community will face. Our agency has been a public housing authority since 1989. And we are regional public housing authority, meaning we serve 18 counties. But we, I will say that the majority of our housing choice vouchers are based, or are taken up by people here in Raleigh County, and specifically Manhattan. 150 of those, of those vouchers. And we have officially 400 vouchers, and we don't have the funding for all of them. That's life as, if you're a housing agency. I also wanted to mention that there, I see collaborations that would be possible as we talk about our aging population. Because our agency also has access to resources, including the Senior Care Act, which provides in-home helps, and sometimes we have money for rehabilitation for, for homes. That could be leveraged and could be part of whatever comes out of this. And we're also working on several initiatives that related, relate to housing in our regional organization. So, again, I just say thank you for the work that's been invested. And hopefully, we'll be talking again about some creating collaborations that will help meet the goals of this particular document. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We have others in the audience. Do any of you wish to come forward to make public comments? Pardon? Oh, it's a class assignment? Oh, well, I'm sure you have opinions. If I can coax, coax you up here. No comments yet? Okay. You have to share what you write later? You don't have to. All right. With that, let's see, I'm gonna, I would close the public comment period and asks us if there's further staff clarification or commission questions. Seeing none. After discussion, there is no motion. And, obviously, so, that should take place tonight. So, the next item on our agenda is the City Managers' Report. Work, pardon? A briefing session, sure. It's a city manager's update. This'll be interesting, don't we? Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. I don't have a lot to cover, other than the planning chart tonight. I just, a couple reminders of some meetings coming up. The October Military Relations Committee Luncheon is next week, on Wednesday, October 5th, at the Four Points Sheraton. There's also a joint city-county meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 20th. Right now, there's no items that have been identified. So, if you have items. And you wanna put that out there? We need those by the 13th.
Okay.
And with that, I would just jump into the planning chart. Would just indicate that in October, Commissioner Mata, you're, you're scheduled to be on K-Man. So, I assume you have that down and are available?
Yes, I do, and I have it available. I should be back in town the day before. So, unless some travel circumstance happens, I'll be there.
All right, very good. The, looking at the next, next week's meeting on October 4th, we've got several second readings there from the salary ordinance, our utility rates, as well as the Abbott's Landing PUD. We have an agreement from Whoville. We have an annual agreement with them for them to use Blue Earth Plaza. This one has a little bit more than is usual, in that they are wanting to install an anchoring system to keep the hurricane-force winds from knocking the tree over. So, that's something that is, they're gonna pay for the cost, they're gonna have it engineered, they're gonna inspect it annually. But it is something that would be a permanent anchoring system within Blue Earth Plaza. So, wanted you to be aware of that. It also involves us waiving some fees and some other things. And we have some participation and responsibility for paying for electricity usage. And we set up tent, rented a tent from, from of that. And some of our staff participate periodically, especially our electrician. So, just wanted you to be aware of that. We have the agreement with National Church Residences for the Garden Grove FEMA buyout project. So, that's something that, you approved the grant application some time ago. We've, we've not been able to submit it yet, because we didn't have the agreement with National Church Residents. Remember, they're participating and providing the 10% local match, which we typically would provide for that grant agreement. So, that's really what this particular agreement is about, and just that aspect of their participation.
Ron, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this, is this tied at all to the final plan for that Manhattan Housing Authority?
Not really. Other than the, the only thing that's really tied is the, is the vouchers. So, the, the senior vouchers that are assigned to that will, if they're not retained in the community somehow, will go back to HUD and, and essentially go away. So, that's the, really the only tie. But it's not tied to the FEMA grant. The FEMA is just a typical buyout program for.
So, basically, I can disconnect those, those two. In other words, they're gonna cover the 10%, and we're gonna level the building.
Right, it's not tied to it. It's not an if or the at, or that type of thing.
And the vouchers could go to another landlord at any time, too. They don't, they aren't tied to that place.
So, on that, on that deal, basically FEMA's buying National Church Residents out. So, they're basically, they're just gonna get paid 90 cents on the dollar.
So, so technically, FEMA's given us a grant.
Okay.
The city is buying out National Church Residents. And, and normally, we would put stormwater fees up as our 10% match. That grant also covers the demolition of the house. There, this could be some salvage components as, as part of, part of this, I would think. And, and I know the elevator's pretty new from the last flood. So, I mean, I think there could be some salvage value in, in some of those components. But we handle all that, as part of that. And then, they get their cut of, of the percentage, and we get a very small admin component. So, there's, there's no, it's really, the grant from FEMA is to us, as the city. And the city is purchasing the property.
And after that, nothing can be built on it?
Right. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. We also have an agreement with Tropical Smoothies. Remember, that was on your agenda for that PUD amendment up at Abbott's Landing, which is on second reading. This is a, a development agreement that essentially is their sanitary sewer extension. So, they need to extend the sewer main, and versus it being a public improvement, it's pretty small. Actually, there's some discussion about whether that's under my authority to do. So, this, that's a question that we'll talk about at staff meeting tomorrow and determine whether this stays on or not. The 5A, B, and C developing the, the Morgan's request for utilities. As of today, we still don't have our typical outside-the-city agreement that's been executed, so that may or may not be on the agenda.
What about the Asia, Expedition Asia sculptures?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, jump that one.
So, we have circumstances where we were on a track for a specific sculptor, an artist, to do some sculptures in the new, three sculptures in the Expedition Asia exhibit area. That sculptor has passed away unexpectedly. And so, there's an amendment to the process. There's still, the Zoo Trust is still providing the funds, and they've created an alternative process where the intent of the, his design, the artist's design can go forward, and they've found somebody else that can finish that. So, there, we just basically need to amend the agreements that we had previously, that you all had previously authorized.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It's too bad.
We, we actually hadn't authorized.
We hadn't authorized it yet?
They just kind of paused the application when the artist had passed away. So, it never actually went to the Ahab or the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board. So, it'll be a fresh application.
Okay.
But there is that, they amended it, and they kind of paused it.
But it'll go through Ahab now?
It has, they already.
It did.
It did. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Jared. We do have a sublease of a hangar agreement. This is simply an existing hangar where the owner wants to sublease a part of it to another one. So, it's, needs your approval to do that. It's pretty routine. Then, on 1A and 1B there, we have a request for qualifications. This is the five-year architectural engineering contract. So, the next five years of CIP items at the airport would be what this recruitment would be for. So, we would be looking for a commissioner to serve on that selection committee. Olson Associates has been the engineer and architectural firm of record. The FAA has allowed them an extension to complete the administrative services for the runway project, which they designed. So, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
That you would retain them for that. But it would involve any, some, you might remember some of the discussion on some of the taxiway work in the next five years, and some of those things that has to be done. So, that would be where some of that would come into play. We've got a, a ward of, we had actually had two bidders for this self-proposed sprayer. So, we're back in the ward of a contract for that. I think, I don't know if, some of you heard me mention it, Eric Gov, if you were there, that we had 17 vehicles and equipment open up for bid, and we got zero bids. And the county mentioned they had zero bids. And I think several others mentioned they had zero bids. So, we are coming with, there are three vehicles that normally, a lot of times, in our bid process, it's just to give an opportunity for folks to bid, and then we go buy them off the state contractor, state contract if nobody bids. Well, there's only, the, the state contracts are way down also. So, there's very limited supplies on the state contract. But there's three that we were looking for that are on the state contract. So, we're bringing a recommendation from three. And then, we're asking you to give us some, give me some flexibility in these unusual times to identify, to kind of waive our typical purchasing components, so we can go find some vehicles. We've been in contact with some dealers. There's some buying services that are, where, like we do the fire trucks, where municipal buying services that have, allegedly have equipment. So, it might be, instead of being able to get three quotes, we might find a vehicle that's close to what we budgeted. But we're also finding things are a lot more expensive, too. So, some of those will ultimately come to you, some of them will be under my authority. And we have some.
Do we need to, at, at that meeting, will we talk about that again and vote?
It's, it's in the memo.
Okay, good. Okay. Because I think it'd be fine if, if you just tell us that there's, there's, there are no vehicles on the state, on the state contract. And then, you know, as you use your authority, if you say that, rather than just having it be an indefinite authority. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Yep. The, looking at pre-ordering some, the traffic signals for the Juliet and Points intersection. Remember, you just awarded the contract for the 600 block of Points. This is adjacent to that. We want to do that intersection. We didn't do it as part of that project, because we didn't want to be subject to the wage rate. So, we have a different funding source for, for this. And so, we're, it's just like everything, the, the lead time for traffic signals. We've pretty much been doing this as a matter of routine, whenever we're either replacing signals, and that's the case here. You've got, KDOT actually installed those signals when Points was part of the state highway. That's how old those signals were. And which one of them failed and fell down in the windstorm a couple of years ago. So, the other item there is a lease purchase for some fire station alerting systems. So, what this is, this is the primary system, where they get the dispatch calls throughout the, throughout the stations. And it's a need to modernize that and make that better for our folks, so they can have more efficient and faster responses. And then, and that is being done through a purchasing. And then, and that is being done through a purchasing uh, cooperative, like we have done with the fire trucks. We're, on the general agenda, we have uh, the first reading of an ordinance to adopt the international codes, uh, both the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, we do this about every three years, uh, to uh, adopt the most modern codes, that's been, we've had good interaction with the building community, the architectural community, as well as the Housing Appeals Board and the folks that, that work in that aspect, and then uh, we have a discussion item scheduled for the Manhattan Senior Housing Proposal, which is the Manhattan Housing Authority's proposal for uh, looking at using some of those, preserving some of those senior credits at National Church Residences and, and that we've talked about before. So it's not an action item, it is a discussion item to look at whether or not, or how you wanna proceed with their proposal, they've also looked at some alternative sites, so I think they'll have some additional information for you.
So is this gonna include alternative sites?
It will, yes.
Okay, and I don't know if the commission's aware of that, I, I suggested.
I'm not.
South, South Reef Avenue?
I'm not familiar with it.
You remember up there, Lee, Lee, that Lee Mill addition that the city ended up, ended up buying, and we put, we did put some housing up there, and we own a bunch of lots there, and I suggested as an alternative, cause you got the letter today too from one of the developers, and so many people were upset about that parking lot that uh, I wanted them to seriously, you know, look at that, and, and I just thought it was a good thing to explore, you know, because we own it and we're not making any money on it, and it, it, it might be a good way for them to go.
So is, um, so they already presented once, right? They, we already had a work session.
We did, yep.
So this is another work session.
This is to get, yeah, in, in my staff's opinion, we don't have the information from you all's reaction to develop a draft agreement.
No.
And, and so we need another work session to see if we're ready for that next stage.
Which is what?
Uh, would be some kind of agreement.
Agreement.
It could be a lease, it could be a memorandum of understanding, it could be a pre-development agreement.
For what?
For that land?
For a, for a development there, or anywhere involving land that is ours.
Like are we gonna be selling a land? Agreement for city.
Or leasing.
Land.
Those, that's the information. What are you all comfortable with?
That's what we're gonna discuss.
That's what we're gonna discuss.
I, I don't have any of that information.
None of us do.
All right.
That's why it's a work session.
But I don't wanna be rushed, I don't want them to say the deadline is October first and we need it now.
And you have to have it or else.
Or October fifth.
So, and, and as Aaron has indicated, from the, there is a deadline for the first round of tax credits uh, at the state and federal level in January, and in order to be able to apply for that, and the, those that are the early suppliers probably have the best chances of getting some of the funds. They need to have control of the site, what's adequate control? Is it a pre-development agreement, such as we had with the parking lot in Aggieville? With back nine, or is it uh, a, an actual uh, agreement that if these things happen, that we're going to either lease long-term or sell property uh, for a particular development, and subject to lots of stipulations? If you don't meet those stipulations, there's no deal, so just for them to have the opportunity to apply for their credits.
So, and who's gonna be presenting it, is it, cause last time it was a consultant or somebody else?
It was, it's the Housing Authority Director, Aaron Esterbrook, and I think he has several development co-partners that are involved with it, so.
Co-develop. I'm very unhappy that our development code does not have a process spelled out like it does for, uh, a, when, when it involves a city-owned property, like it does for a developer who owns his own property, and we have to consider all these things, but this, uh, when, when it's our property, this just inches along, meeting by meeting, and suddenly it's, uh, I mean, we don't have a lot of choices.
The problem is, when this happened last, something, I wouldn't say something similar, but when we did the parking lot for the Marriott, it looked as though nobody in the community know that that was even up for debate as far as an option for them to use, and this seems similar to that, that the public doesn't even know that's an option for them to put in a bid, if they want.
We don't know what the project is.
The direction we need from you also, because both of those, both the Marriott, all of those, we've done a request for interest.
Then that's what needs to be done.
Request for interest.
Are there anybody that has a proposal?
Somebody else.
Somebody else, we, we put it out there and we did that for the.
Well, nobody can, nobody can respond in a week or two.
I would like for that to happen before they come to us, if there might be other people that might be interested in that.
Nobody can pull something like that together in a week or two for a certain site.
I think that's the frustrating piece, because we're doing it because we are reacting to somebody else already wanting that and bringing us a proposal when others haven't even had a chance to think, is that something I would like to?
But, you know, for, for me, it's, it's, it's tied to that FEMA thing indirectly. I mean, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to do housing for the, what you would call the disadvantaged folks in town, and that's gotta be the priority, so we've got to assist, you know, Aaron Esterbrook and, and being able to put his application in, in time, and, you know, the argument really boils down to, you know, city parking lot or alternate site.
You can't get the proposal in here until one week prior to, or two weeks till it's due.
But.
I mean, you're not the problem.
If we look at, you know, alternate site, I'm, I'm sort of in favor of that, s- simply because, you know, that land's been laying there vacant for years, I remember Rod and Harm talking to me about that in two thousand and ten, you know? And so I, I, I just like that approach, and I think, I think it, you know, we can explore it at that, at that meeting.
Too.
But I, I don't think we need to gum this up by, you know, trying to put a request for proposal out there.
I'm not gumming it up, I'm just saying, I don't, I, I, I'm not comfortable with the way that we sell or give away our city properties, and, and uh, anyway, it's a.
So I guess the, the question is.
It's a loophole, it lets uh, things happen that we had, we require developers to have all kinds of certifications and there are standards, and our process, you could just drive a truck through, it's so wide open.
We don't have their project yet, what do you mean, it, you know, usually they're in here months ahead of time.
A week, not even.
Years ahead of time, we won't even see it till Thursday for us to even look at it before Tuesday meeting.
But my understanding is, we're gonna agree to give them control of some property, they're still gonna have to go through all that development stuff, just like everybody else. You know, when, when, when they come up with a design for their building or buildings, that's gotta go through the whole process, this is just a matter of giving them control of a piece of property so they can proceed, and I, I don't have any issue with that.
You'll have to speak up, John, we can't hear you.
I, I'm just saying that, well, when said, you know, this to give them site control under all sorts of conditions that they're gonna have to be, to go forward, so it shouldn't be seen like, all of a sudden if we, you know, that we're not gonna have a chance to review drawings, we're not gonna have a chance to make sure, for example, that there's not a net loss in parking if they go with the original site. All those things will be part of, well, what we'll be doing is we go down the road.
Ron, could I just add that Katie Jackson and I have been working on a memo for most of today that outlines for the two potential sites that have been mentioned by MHA so far, some considerations for the commission to keep in mind if you choose to go with one of those sites. So we really are trying to give you, you haven't heard from staff yet on this issue, it's been presentations by the Manhattan Housing Authority, we're trying to give you kind of a staff perspective on some things for you to keep in mind as you make those decisions. That memo will go out with your packet for October fourth, and hopefully that kinda serves as, um, as a little bit of information uh, from your city staff.
I, I think, I, I'm not, I'm, I think you're doing uh, the right thing, that's not the problem. The problem is, it feels uh, as though um, we are being presented with a proposal, one, I, that I had no idea that we were even discussing, because I've been stuck on the senior center lot for so long, that I didn't even know there was an option that we were gonna be discussing, uh, and the part, the next part to that is, it brings back the memories of the Marriott, when people were, we got tons of emails, I, I didn't know that that was even up for sale, or that was even up for debate, or if we could even buy that property, and it seems as though we are already getting set to negotiate or look at, you know, agreements before any of the other public even has an option, if that's the land they wanna purchase, or whatever it is they wanna do.
Nobody even knows it's for sale.
We haven't done anything with it, so.
And that is a point we brought up in the memo, of giving you, of saying what we did with the Marriott or with the midtown development, of just outlining those different processes you found before, to give you perspective, to let you know this is how, um, with the, the lot out at Lee Mill Village, we identified that Manhattan Area Housing Partnership, that there were lots there that they bought from the city. There's a lot of information, it's, it's eight pages, I'm sorry to say that, but there is a, a wealth of information in there that we really tried to provide every perspective that we could, so I hope that you find that helpful and answer, you get some answers to some of those questions that you've had.
No, I think you're doing fine, that's the direction you were given. When something's coming and you're telling us it's coming, and then you say, but we don't have a proposal yet, I can't, I don't know anything to talk to you about because we don't, the city, you do not have a proposal yet, but yet it's coming, it, it's coming our way October fourth, that's the issue for me, is, and there's nothing in the development code that says what we do with our city parking lots, we end up just, they, we lose them one at a time, and, and it, there are good reasons why, but we have other city parking lots too, you know, the one north of the, of the county courthouse is a good big one that could be up for discussion, but it isn't, you know, there are other, there's Colony Square, there are other big chunks of the city that could be uh, on, we could be talking about and not even know it. Anyway.
So one of the reasons we have these briefing sessions, and we go over this planning chart, is to determine whether there's a majority commissioners that want to entertain this item, so. That would be, I'm hearing mixed signals, so this, are you open to a discussion item, it's not an action item, for more discussion on this senior housing proposal?
Is, isn't the discussion whether we're willing to give control of the parking lot? Isn't that what you ought to be saying, rather than us talking about housing?
Yeah, I, I think control of some ownership of property the city has. Right now, it's that site.
Yeah.
And it's the Lee Mill Village site, so both of those we own.
Could change.
Are you interested in having further conversation with them about this topic?
I, I would like to have a conversation about them and Lee Mill Village, um, especially with this downtown vision thing that we're gonna be implementing, that, that really is, we really should probably try to, yeah, hold off on, on something there, um, but if, if they could make that work, I know it's not handy to, for, for the disabled and the elderly to live that far away from grocery stores and various things like that, but as opposed to not being able to do a project, it might be a pretty attractive location.
That is land we have, we are currently marketing, so it's not like somebody hasn't said it's, we didn't know it was available.
It's for sale.
Yeah, of course, I'm all for it, and I, and I may have made the suggestion to a number of people about South Reef and, and look at it, I've been talking to city staff and Manhattan Housing Authority because I, I saw all the, all the animosity against that parking lot, and figured, you know, we gotta open it up a different way, and I, and I guess Stephanie's, you know, taken that to another, another level on the memo, but, but clearly, we need to have this meeting and, and, and decide which direction we're going. And the parking lot may not be it.
Or if we even wanna be a partner in any of them.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what I would like to know, I like to know the pros and cons, I wanna know, oh, I wanna know, I don't want, I don't want it to be sold to us, like this is the best thing that can happen to the city of Manhattan. I wanna know the pros and cons of it from, from the city perspective, because that, this is all taxpayer stuff that we're discussing right now, and I wanna make sure that we are not going to be pushed because of a deadline to make a poor choice.
Yes, we, we agree, there's a lot of information that's happening very quickly, and, you know, realize that there's, there's a good opportunity there, but that not, may not be in the best interests of the community from that perspective, cause there'll be more rounds of those, they'll just be more competitive. Okay, I appreciate that back, feedback, so as of right now, we're gonna continue to have a discussion item. Okay, that takes care of October fourth, on the eighteenth, we've got uh, first reading of the Aggieville and Downtown Business Improvement District's annual service fees, and I'm, I'm thinking there's no change, but I might be wrong, there might, maybe one of them is increasing fees just a bit. Then we have the second reading of the code adoptions, and then uh, we've got some, the storage tanks uh, down at the uh, South Juliet City Shops, that, of course, we've made an agreement to sell that property, uh, and so part of that agreement was to uh, remove our fuel storage tanks as part of that, to, to give them that, that clean side, so we're anticipating a bid opening October fifth. For that, uh, there's a final plat at Colbert Hills Unit Six, and that's, uh, don't think that's been to the planning board yet, probably their first meeting in October.
That's actually supposed to go to the planning board, I think, the night before, on October seventeenth. Um, that we're still working out some things, so that could potentially move, but we kept that on there, just so you're aware.
And we're anticipating some potential grants uh, from KDOT possibly, um, so we'll see if we're fortunate enough to get those uh, on Juliet, and also on Fort Riley Boulevard. We've applied for them, and uh, we're supposed to be hearing whether or not we're gonna get those. Several resolutions there for uh, our standard investment powers, expanded investment powers that we have as a community to invest our idle funds, gotta set a date for some temp note sales, anticipating that there'll be some recommendations for some Parks and Rec fees coming to you. And then uh, we had at the last city-county meeting, a resolution for support of the MHK River Fundraising Program, and so I've provided a, a draft resolution to the county for them to look at and see if they concur with that draft. I thought maybe we'd be able to get on the fourth, but I don't think we're gonna be able to do that. General agenda, we plan to have uh, our plan for all the fees and policies for the Aggieville Parking Garage that we would like to take effect uh, at the beginning of the year, coming before you, and all of those components, and then first reading of the standard traffic ordinance with all the changes that the state of Kansas incorporates those on an annual basis, and then a public hearing uh, potentially on adopting and amending the comp plan to incorporate the housing market analysis that we just went through, so.
I wanted to ask about the Aggieville Parking Garage, I saw the big article about K-State's uh, gonna be license plate readers, will, uh, is that, uh, we're going to do that too, January one? Are we trying to coordinate that, or is that off the table?
Similar technology, but it's not exactly the same, but it's similar technology, so I mean.
So it's not gonna be coordinated, it's just each, we're each buying our own?
Correct.
Okay.
We did, we did visit with them about it.
Is it gonna use the same app and stuff, or?
The app will still be compatible with.
It will be, the Park Mobile app will be the same, so you can go to K-State, Aggieville, or even the airport, and you'd be using the same app across those. The, the equipment merit here, uh, question will, will be the same in concept, but we are using a different vendor than Kansas State, so we're using IPS, and um, K-State's using T-two Tyler, it's one of those Tyler technology ones.
Well, I think it's important, I, that, that you're using the same parking applica- mobile application, and is that gonna be at the airport too?
Eventually, or I, I know they have an agreement with them, uh, I don't know if they've started it yet.
With, and they're gonna use the same one you're using, not the one K-State's using, right?
The app will be the same across, uh, across Aggieville, K-State, and the airport, which is called Park Mobile, so the user experience is gonna be the exact same for anyone in the community, that wherever they're parking, they'll have the Park Mobile app, they'll register their license plate, and they'll choose where they're parking, how long they wanna park.
Thank you.
The airport still has the traditional gates, though.
And that, and it will be the side streets also?
Yes, yep, all of our parking zones, yep.
Okay.
Downtown in Aggieville, and then eventually we'll wanna take it to the garage downtown.
Yeah.
Okay.
All three of them.
Okay, work sessions, uh, on 10/11. Uh, right now, you've got, uh, RCPD's, uh, going to start their quarterly updates, as well as, uh, you'll have your Convention and Visitors Bureau third quarter update. Uh, I did note that you all received an invitation to a crisis center event that starts at 5:30 that day and goes till 6:30, so.
The 11th?
I don't know if you all plan to go to that or not.
Is that by, is that on the 11th?
Yes.
I just saw it today, okay.
At 5:30?
Yes.
Anyway.
Uh, what about the AUSA? It, that, that's just a note, because.
That's just a note. Commissioner Ready and I will be at AUSA.
You should, and you, okay, good.
On the 25th, uh, I just, I know you've gotten invitations to the KSU Political Diplomatic Military Lecture Series that would, uh, correspond with a work session. So, I didn't know if, uh, you all were planning to go that, or?
Is that the current general, or, or is he retired?
Retired general, yep. Retired Lieutenant General.
Was he here?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't recognize his name.
I'd like to go to that if we, we don't.
So, you can just, you can kind of RSVP to that, and we'll decide whether we're going to have a work session.
Later on.
I won't be going to that.
Okay. All right, and then, uh, having assigned some of these other ones, some other things that are coming up that we're looking at, though, is, uh, looking at the cemetery master plan and some options and opportunities we have with there. We want some discussion with you about, uh, some of your thoughts about, uh, our cemeteries and, uh, uh, some improvements that are needed at those cemeteries, as well as, uh, developing a master plan and just kind of a, a long-term strategy for, uh, trying to sustain them. So, those are going to be something we want to bring to you. And then, uh, we're developing, uh, kind of a, another memo on boards and committees that kind of speaks to everything and gives you a timeline for some of those decisions. Back to a lot of our original discussions about keeping in mind that we're running un- we're operating under a 1995 policy, I think it is, that really needs to be modernized, so that's kind of where we're going to go back and start. And then, uh, just some of the different aspects that we'd like to, uh, have feedback on.
Somebody asked me just yesterday, um, via email, whether someone under 18 could be appointed to our boards. And so, I emailed it to, um, Brenda Wolf. But I think our, our guidelines don't speak to it. So, it might be, you know, how we just keep discovering things we need to think about. And I know at one time, we had a city commissioner that was in, um, that was, uh, a, a K-State student on the commission. And so, sometimes those useful voices, uh, make a difference and add another dimension to our discussion. So, that might be something else we at least talk about when that time comes.
So, you know, at one of the other work sessions, we talked about some things being dissolved and such. So, you're talking now about process. When does that come back?
So, we, we would address that in the memo and have some suggestions for how that, uh, might move forward. And look for feedback on, on those aspects.
So, because it seems.
Transition, and when would it take effect, and that sort of thing.
So, we didn't make any decisions. That was the work session. So, when that comes back to us, it looks like it might be in November. So, by then, all of these boards will have met still, right?
Sure, yeah, we're.
So, is that ta- being taken back to them to get their feedback on our discussion?
Well, there are, the, most of them are providing it without us talking about it, so.
I would like to he- I mean, I, hopefully, it's on their agenda formally as well, because they're looking at bylaws. But I hope some of them also address how they see the evolution of their advisory board.
So, we've tried to, this, this memo's going to try to be a little bit comprehensive in nature, dealing with, you know, you're all's primary aspect of, uh, some of the original goals we talked about, just in the, the processes, the forms, all of that, as well as, you know, the, looking at, I, I think it would be beneficial for you all to weigh in on, here was the original charge of this group. Is that still something you want that group to focus on? Now, I know some of them are talking about adding to that charge. That, that would be a different conversation about whether you're open to that or not.
So, that's what we originally asked for. But what we were presented was, here's some things you should consider dissolving. That's where the discussion went. So, I wanted to know if those committees, like the Manhattan Advisory Board, uh, Arts and Humanities Advisory Board, or the Bikes and Peds Board, or the Partner City Board, when they meet, one, are they still meeting? And two, will they, now that they know we've had that discussion, will they provide us feedback on how they see the evolution of their board? Because we haven't made a decision. That was a discussion item. Uh, is that going to be happening?
So, they are continuing to meet. We're treating them as if they were, they're still functioning, though no decisions have been made. Most of them have met already and have expressed an opinion and have talked about sending messages to you.
Yeah, because their feedback would be important on how they want to see their board.
And most of them felt like that was more effective if they did that individually versus voting on something.
So, you, you haven't received any feedback? I've gotten it from all those.
Well, yeah, I have, but that wasn't what we asked for. Originally, we asked for processes. And then, we ended up talking about dissolving some boards. So, yeah, I got a lot of emotional things. But I think, uh, do they know that, do they know that they have, they ha- that they can also be part of the conversation, that a decision has not been made?
Yes, that's been expressed to them, that it was just a work session.
And that they can provide a plan or ideas if they want to meet, uh, once, uh, a quarter or something like? Have they been provided that option to see how they want to be?
We haven't had a discussion of that detailed with them, because we don't want to give them a false impression, because there was a majority that gave a direction on certain things. This memo is trying to confirm some of those things and some possible steps for transitioning or not.
I remember in the five years ago, asking that we just clean up our board, advisory board process. Uh, make it simpler, and, uh, we've gone to the deep end before we ever got to the shallow end here about, uh, uh, the, the, the process and, um, so, you know, I, I, I mean, I was thinking more of editing some of the advisory board, um, instructions, at least the ones that I see, uh, so that maybe we don't need a Blue Valley representative on the bicycle advisory. I was thinking, well, we could get rid of that, you know? And, but instead, we're doing away with the whole board, which is deeper water than I plan to go.
That was just a work session. We didn't make a vote. We didn't do a vote vote.
I agree. Uh, but I just, uh, my.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
John.
I have, I have to leave, so.
Okay.
To say, and, um, as far as my responses on the board, I know Ron, you've got them, and they're still the same. Thanks.
Good night.
Yep, and I agree on that too. I'm, I'm swimming in the deep end, you know, on that, so.
Okay, uh, did we, is he done? I don't know. I would like to ask, uh, not tonight, to put you on the spot or anything, but I'd like an update on the opioid funds that are coming to us. Whether the money has ever come, I think we heard about it three or four months ago. But I wondered if the money has ever arrived. Other communities are, uh, making plans for how to spend it. So, at an up, a, an upcoming work session, I'm happy to have an update about that and what we want to do with it.
I, I think we've received just a very small fraction of.
Yeah, we were anticipating in total, possibly, you know, around $200,000. We have only received one payment, and it's $14,000. So, we're, we're trying to figure out internally and working with the state, when are we going to get more payments? And, and then, because it's, it's easier to have a conversation with the commission about what do we want to do with $200,000 than, well, we only got $14,000 right now. So, we have it sitting idle in a fund, and, uh, we're hoping that we're going to receive more payments soon.
And that comes from the Attorney General, right, not, uh?
The state, yeah, because it was a state, uh, lawsuit that we joined as a class action.
Yeah, I think so. I was just wondering whatever happened to it, because, and, um, I'm, you know, I'm eager to talk about how to spend it when the time comes. Okay.
Yeah.
Are there questions from other commissioners about future?
Yeah, I've got just two things. One, I, I sent, and I got, I think City Commission got a call on that, the gentleman over there on Wood Duck that's worried about, you know, Wise Bender's vacant lot and somebody's camping out on it. And are we going to be able to do, you know, I, I don't know, we don't have a policy on that, you know? Because we got all this city property now that's bought out in a floodplain. And we got the disruption of the homeless because of the, you know, stuff on the levee. And so, a, a couple of them, I guess, have moved down to, you know, Wildcat Creek off, off Anderson and, and Wood Duck Way. And I, I got a couple complaints from homeowners about it, but I didn't provide them an answer, as I sent it to you, because I knew not how to handle it.
And we've formed, uh, and have been forming, uh, a, kind of a task group internally, uh, that has, it's not just city, it involves RCPD and others. And they are meeting tomorrow, and that's one of the things they're going to talk about, because we need to handle it correctly, uh, in the right way.
And in a united way, yeah.
And make sure that we're coordinated and not violating somebody's rights.
Yeah, I knew that was a tricky one, so I, you know, when the guy called me, I told him, I, I can't give you an answer on how it's going to be dealt with, because I just don't have any frame of reference. And that got me thinking, again, you know, we're going to end up with the Gardenway Lot, and the city just keeps absorbing all this property, and then we have to mow it. Is there any way that, you know, and again, I'm sure there's some legal reason we couldn't do it. But, but I asked one of the homeowners living next to it, what if the city gave you that to maintain in some method? Would they take it? And the guy said, yes, but, but the restriction would be naturally, you can't put a, a structure on it. You could put a playground set, you, you could, you could grow tomatoes. But then, they would end up mowing it, and it just wouldn't be a burden for public works. And, and I'm just not sure if there's a legal way to do that. I mean, that, that would be my intent. And, and not force it on anybody. That was my wife's response. You can't force them to take it. I know that. You know, but, but, but if somebody would, would like the property next to them, which has been bought out by the city, then it'd be something less for us to worry about.
There's no homeowner next to that at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can transfer the property, but we may be able to enter into some kind of a lease that, and create a management plan that's fits with the, what you can do and can't do on it, and that, we can explore that.
If we could do that on a short piece of paper, we, we might be able to save us some mowing costs and gas costs and stuff.
Something that doesn't get, grow over a foot high, you know?
Yeah, the, the pollinator thing, which we've done on some of it down there off of South Reef, has worked real well.
Plantings that, I'm, our city, uh, staff knows. Manager probably knows.
But, but I, I just think that'd be one way to, you know, lessen some of our maintenance costs, and then some homeowners could maybe get some use out of it.
I like the idea of the garden, but I know that they get kind of messy and are hard to clean up and.
So, I was, um, well, I was thinking about that, uh, where the, um, car museum is. They have, sometimes they have plants that they sell in the back, like a greenhouse or something. I don't know who does that.
Paw Valley.
Paw Valley.
Paw Valley Greenhouse.
Yeah, so that's, it can be utilized in a variety of ways or something. I don't know what your options would be to look into it, if somebody wants to lease it, rent it, I don't know. Farmer's Market, I, I don't know how that would all look there. Um, but I just wanted to say, tomorrow, we're meeting for the first time after four or five months. The town young meeting, we're going to be meeting. Uh, President Lynton did a nice job yesterday at Intergovernmental. Uh, the student data and enrollment should be coming out Thursday. So, we're looking forward to that, to see what those numbers look like and how they are, um, growing, hopefully. Uh, NPO met last week and, um, adopted the Transportation Improvement Program Plan. Uh, all of it looks really good. There's lots of details in there about future projects and such. Uh, hopefully, I, I can send out a link to all of you as well to take a look at it. But I did want, Ron, Ron, can you give us, just let us know how Parks and Rec is doing, like, since our last meeting? Have we, how, how are the fall sessions going, or the fall programs and so?
I think, uh, uh, activity is gone, is going well. Uh, signups are going well. We're, uh, continuing to add staff, uh, that's, so we're being able to staff up. So, uh, you know, I, I think it's encouraging. And so, um, you know, we're still, I would say, rebuilding, um, and reformatting and looking at different aspects, and that's, I mentioned the fees, and I know, uh, they've engaged with the Park and Rec Advisory Board to have some of those discussions about, uh, future programs and things to look at for cost recovery in that aspect.
Are you guys working out pretty well?
Yep, Chris is doing a great job.
Boys and Girls Club.
As far as I know, that's working well. We suspended it there for a while, and, and we opened it back up. And I didn't hear any negative responses from that.
No, it's been, it's been going well. They're still around, hovering around 45 at each facility, 45 kids at each facility during the day.
Yeah, I just wanted to know. I know they're having a meeting on Monday, I think. And hopefully, there's a lot on their agenda, so that'll, that'll be good to know more about. Also, I wanted to know how we're doing on e-scooters. I don't know if you have that information. If you don't, that's fine.
In August, we were up to about 15,000 rides, which is, uh, lower than other years. Um, one of the probably reasons, though, was that school started later this year. So, usually, the kids get back a week early, and then usually, we're around 20,000 rides. But September's been rocking and rolling with the students back, and, uh, so revenue's coming in.
Did we increase the, uh, amount, uh, on that?
The amount to ride a scooter, it's still a dollar to unlock, and currently, it's 37 cents to, uh, per minute. So, that has been an increase over time. Uh, Link approached, uh, city administration and K, KSU administration this last summer, mainly because, uh, operating costs were going up, fuel was going up, uh, so they did increase that. We did negotiate with them, uh, about, uh, th- this was a previous negotiation when they increased it to 30 cents a minute. Uh, we told them, well, if, if you're going to increase your fees to 30 cents a minute, you need to give us 30 cents a ride instead of 25 cents, and they agreed to that. So, it increased the money a little bit going into the City University Fund, which is good.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, got to pay for the North Campus Corridor. That's a good point. Um, are we, will you have a report, uh, about, uh, the suc- the success of the swimming program this summer? I mean, beyond just what you have in your city manager's report, I'd like to, to just have a, a briefing at an upcoming work session would be fine. And I know it might not be ready yet, you know, it takes a while to, after that flurry of activity, to pull something like that.
Yeah, I can check on that. I, I think maybe that might be on the Park and Rec Advisory Board's.
Okay.
Agenda, because I think, I know they've asked for that too.
And, uh?
Sydney's doing triple duty still, so.
Is she? Don't, don't wear too far out. Are we, are you still looking for a new director?
So, again, we're, uh, evaluating. We want to get back to a rebuild and stable before we start that recruitment. But we do plan to hire one, yes.
Okay.
But we have not started that process.
Before hiring, okay. Okay, are we out of questions? Get back to the script here, let's see. Thank you, Ron, for update and answering all of our questions. Is there a mo- motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting. Jared, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Uh, you know, I'll have to ask Brenda tomorrow if I say Commissioner's modern name or not, but will this go to Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
You can just say he.
Motion passes four to zero. There we go.
He le- he left the meeting, so the, it's got.